To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
A change of chairs.
It's like the person who says, you don't have to be so aggressive with the chair.
But it's problem.
It's just a chair.
I'm gonna go with this, it's the ghost of Cecil Hoben.
Only I get to fling my chair back when I'm mad.
He was always keeping an eye on it.
Everybody seen today's agenda, any conflicts of interest or comments? Agenda will be approved as soon as I can. Uh, reading in the minutes.
Well. Uh, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Craig Dozart, Vice Chair presiding, members present Schultz, Dozart, Hyden, and Rossberg via Zoom. Member absent, mobile minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. The board approved quicker court fees for October twenty twenty-five. The board had a discussion with Zach Rasmussen, Emergency Management Coordinator, and some EMS members of the county about EMS Task Force Central Services. Jody Presswood, CFO with Elder Bridge, gave the annual report and fund request of thirteen thousand two hundred seven dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven budget. The board had a discussion with Louise Galbraith about mental health, first aid training. Plains area does provide this service. The board had a discussion with Zach Rasmussen, Emergency Management Coordinator, about the tower lease at the courthouse with Verizon. The second tier canvas was conducted by the Board of Supervisors for city school election. Held November fourth, twenty twenty-five, copy, sorry, copies of the canvas and abstract are available in the auditor's office on motion due with second board adjourned eleven thirty-seven AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday four thirty PM.
Any correction for comments?
Is that last week they were here with EMS, it was essential service?
No. They're last week's winners.
Trying to focus on something else. Part in there, I heard Zach Rasmussen, tower relationship. Okay.
Board had a discussion with Zach Rasmussen, EM, emergency coordinator by us. You're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Just what, right?
Oh, yeah, you weren't here, that's why. Thank you.
Supervisor reforms, Kyle.
I had a yes center meeting Friday, and here's the audit, maybe it wants to see that typical, everything was good, typical stuff, small number of people to, I mean, lack of segregation.
Oh, segregation of duties?
Yeah. That's on there.
It can be hard to attain in this, all this serious, yeah.
I do like it, they do, but the, every month there's three of us randomly get expected to come in and bill all the bills.
Oh.
Up at the yes center, just to double check and make sure, that's kind of helps, is our segregation of duties. I just got the CEO or whatever paying bills.
Yeah, I think we're here.
So, that's
you've talked about something similar that we're doing now. That's one of the things that they're doing to actually increase oversight of the center.
Yeah.
We're actually still, I think we'll have an executive committee, and then there's gonna be three or four other committees that are doing them different.
Mm-hmm.
Like you just said, separate segregation duties. So, yeah, I find.
So, I was thinking about, and I mean, the landfill solid waste commission gets doing the same things, and I think maybe that maybe we should start doing that too, you know, just be there, just have a few full hours to double check and see.
That's a good point. Kyle, just.
Run a mini audit.
Yeah, a little mini audit, and now again, and we could even do that at this table, just have random every pay period, twenty claims come out, and just make, or ten or whatever, and just say, yep.
Kind of like
sort of sampling of them and.
Kind of like what we do with the MS, or EMA, and you do it nine months long, where you go over their filter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, just, just thought, not saying we have to implement, but I think I'm gonna, the landfill side, I think, double check everything.
Yeah, no, Kyle, I just randomly looking through this, and one thing that just jumped out at me when I, when I read this, is it just says uh, total charges, and you wonder why sometimes we're in the position that we're in, it said total charges for services to member counties during the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, were three hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. The member counties will bill one seventy-five per diem for juvenile detention services, provided compared to two hundred and fifty dollars per diem for non-member counties, and one hundred dollars per diem for the federal government.
Yeah, that's a, the BIA is a, that's just weird when you see that, you're like, really? The federal government gets by at a cheaper rate than a, than a member even gets. The BIA with federal government, that is like a negotiated, it's a negotiated deal, and they're only there when we have empty spots.
So, they can't kick anybody else out?
All right.
They get kicked out. Still see, they should be charged.
If they have a, if they're not a member rate, they're taking up a bed.
Gotcha.
And the place is full, and Carter County is a kid, that's certain, that guy, that's all. All non-member county, or that way.
But when it says federal government, is that the Indian reservation?
Yeah, BIA.
Cause I was wondering what.
Indian Affairs Department of the Interior.
So, what did, do those kids just go back home?
Or they get placed someplace else, but isn't it? It's quite, yeah.
But then when you think about, so this child is in a bed, and because somebody else needs it, we got the transportation, the two people to travel, that whole re-transition, uh, just doesn't seem fair to the child who's been placed there, and maybe just start to fill at home, and because of money, they're being moved to another place, you know, it just, if that, as a, in the being of places.
You're, but you're right, Craig, though, I mean, that number probably is a little weak, but being negotiated with the federal government, that's yes, and that's what they pay. And the negotiation is just, here's what we're paying.
If they do.
Yeah. And, uh, and you'll get the money whenever we have one.
Right.
In three months, you have a seat, you know.
You got business with all that topic, he's talking.
I think my father-in-law almost asked quick during fire business.
Maybe it was a day to buy it.
Twenty foot time.
Boy, that was crazy. Nope, yep. Yep. But, uh, back to the meeting, uh, yeah, sorry, I didn't. No, that's a good question, it, it really spent most of the time with the audit, you know, they go through the page by page in brief, you know. They've been full on member counties, but they expect that to go down to like little to nothing this week, during the holidays. There'll always be a few in there. Carroll County's had a pretty rough one over there, that few buyers are a little stressed out over, which are some characteristic for Carroll County. Do it, turn in some stuff off. It's amazing how resourceful them, you know, can so.
It's a nice way to put it.
Uh, they're gonna switch to, I don't, don't think we have any need for this, but I thought maybe we would, they, they have a Horizon Pumps in all the cars for transports, the car died into the computers of the car, and Cheryl gets notifications on her phone if they're exceeding the speed limit, or, you know, they sit still for too long, but they were individually priced, but there's a government program where they'd be all under one bill now. And, uh.
Save money?
Saves money, and also has got smarter technology now, cause now she was getting, they went from Iowa to South Dakota, didn't recognize the updated speed limit. So, she can get a lot of unneeded, you know, you're exceeding the speed limit, knowing you're in South Dakota, you're not. But this is automatically
Automated.
Just like your
GPS.
GPS on your car or whatever now, so.
All good?
I know we've talked about stuff with our blade.
My used to use to give that, each state they know, all which highway.
You're only speeding when you get into Iowa. Every other state is leeway. And, uh, I just sent around the financials for that. I'll send it around. Budget-wise, I mean, we're right where we're supposed to be.
Does that program kind of rate your people? Do you like to mark ELDs? I get a report once a, every, every, well, it comes Tuesday afternoon every week, and it tells me my rating, what good
Well, I don't work.
Fair, or, or excellent.
I have to ask that question.
And, and then the driver sees that, and it kind of becomes the competition to get that up, and then hold it up.
Really?
See if they have that.
This is my driver's ELD. You know, well, then I'm getting in trouble.
Here's the thing, is you can pay a bonus off that.
Yeah.
And that improves safety out there, there, you know. I've just, when you, when you, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No.
But I, I thought you might want to.
Those are good points, cause I mean, that's something that would, I mean, if you got a lot of drivers that are low, or can, one or two that are consistently low, and maybe I need to have talk with them, cause I'm sure drives your insurance accordingly.
And that's, drives your insurance and your safety rating, and you'd be surprised in trucking how much stuff that affects, you know, which is different to what you're doing. But heck, even some brokers will hire you for safety rating, and that, well, safety rating, it's, oh. So, it's just, we're, I just wanted to throw that out.
And, being, so we're talking, I know Cheryl was cautiously optimistic about the new director over there, I mean, there's always was a rub between Tony and the rest of the world, world. So, this one, your new director, I think actually reached out to her already, and says, you know, I wanna be a player, I wanna be part of the team.
Like she's
Be part of the problem, but.
That's encouraging to hear, though.
But she is cautiously optimistic, part is, whole county's been rubbing with the new director up there.
All schmoozing?
Schmoozing, and that's her, figure that the two biggest.
I'll say something to Kyle.
The two biggest detention centers get together and team up to, to the rest.
I'll say something to Kyle, thanks for that point.
Yeah, so, I consider.
I would like to see unified detention
Well, it should be.
Where they can help each other with problems, because let's face it, they have their kids because of problems, so the better they all get at solving these problems, the better the whole system will be. They'd like to think someday we won't have problem children, that's
It.
That's probably gonna always be there.
I don't know what's gonna change, but, you know, it just keeps gradually getting worse, I mean, you look at their twenty, the financials, I think Dave and I are first two years on, and we never thought we ever really had any kids up there. And then, then we went to have that budget amendment.
Two years now.
You send them money every month, regardless if we have a kid there?
We just, we pay for our kids.
If we don't have any kids.
Right.
If we don't have kids, or we don't pay.
Right.
We've been sending money to them every month.
Who?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, center.
Cause I mean, our, our balance.
Yeah, we haven't had send any, our way.
And October thirty, nine thousand, proper counting, nine thousand sixty-eight dollars.
There's no yearly or monthly membership.
Okay, no, then in November, four thousand.
It's gonna separate rate, you know, when your kids are there.
Yeah. That was the end of the month, and then that was as of Friday, yeah, we just
Twelve years ago.
Sent them a check.
I think we had twenty-five thousand, all the member counties to.
Twenty-five thousand, your dad would have been on that, when they had the problem with the director, they had fired, and they, counties had to pitch in to make it.
Make it go.
Back to us, us positive balance.
And that's a risk of being a member county.
Yeah.
Right. Get a better rate, but if something like that happens. Right.
And I, I, true, I think Palo Alto's been wanting to join now.
Have they dropped out?
We're not taking any new member counties on currently, because we're fully
Current member county. Palo Alto, they, he was a big supporter, you know, of, of supervision. And I, I think they have pantry backed out. And I think that was a bad move up there, that's, I really did it. But, cause now our rates are pretty, I think, that's very identical, which I don't know of all this false stuff, cause they're pretty similar.
Well, you think that was should be, I mean, granted, they should have the same rate, no matter what detention center you're in, obviously, some are more feasible to run than the others, or whatever, or.
The only thing that should change by line is if you alter more services, like if you got other additional cows, like, or stuff like that, to pay for that, you know, I just didn't think county thought that it was a good idea. I should say, Nate thought it was a good idea, he used that for a particular kid, he seems to pay attention to the individual kid real well. I don't, sorry, didn't.
No, I'll get discussions, so. Other than that, oh, just food for thought, as I was watching level of new buildings bought off the other day, I couldn't ask for better dirt to build on, this is clay.
Which I wrote.
Yeah, it's gonna be a good building to add, but I called Ben and asked him about it. You know, probably be a three bay shop standard, I says, what, uh, we, could we do just to have as an additional bid option before, maybe?
Reasoning?
Reasoning is might catch a lot of flack and mess them, but it's in the public, we had no, the ricket shops, but three and a half miles away. With the heat, you know, we know, we need is one more bay, and we could
House of both out of there, yeah.
Would that, how about, how much would that screw us up in the summer for deploying motor grader, and what would be the extra cost in man hours?
All right, three miles, three and a half miles, actually, probably, but three miles, and he's in his territory, so what's that take? At twenty mile an hour, at three minutes to get to his territory?
Nice. So, just one person there, rickets?
Yeah, there's one.
I was just kinda like, when you get way up by, like, the hunting area and stuff like, he did
Yeah, it's a
That, doesn't he?
Yeah.
So, how many more calls we gonna get, the, or grader's driving by with the blade?
I don't know, I'm just looking at
Right, your turn.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just
You know, I think that building, we know, that's probably built in the thirties, so it's not
That's actually a good cost effective, it would be a more cost effective.
You know, it costs forty thousand to put a new bay on.
What Ben think?
He thought he would highly consider that as an alternate bid, right?
Well, like
The pad's good, I said, we'll just make the pad big enough now before.
Right, the alternative, if we ever had to rebuild in rickets.
Yeah, you're gonna talk another
Four hundred thousand.
You know, and granted, probably be a smaller shed like Buckville, maybe only two bays, but still.
That greater operator live right in rickets?
Oh, you know, that's a question I asked, and I thought Ben said he lived in Sluggs or Dennis.
Really?
Yeah. So.
Tap the battle, I would, what would be getting to your piece of equipment?
So, some of them stay overnight?
Yeah, in the snow, so.
That happened.
And even if they made the pad bigger, and just build the three bays, the pads are already built, but that's our
Is the truck run out of rickets?
It's not, probably not.
Just a motor grader, right?
Add a concrete. Yep. And the other thought is with, uh, that's a pretty nice location for a EMS hub, if that takes off.
He already bid the concrete bid, did he bid any of the building or concrete yet?
For the new building? No, it's not even in this budget, so.
So, what would be EMA of rickets?
No, I love
In Charter Road?
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
Ambulance shed, no, you're right, though.
We like going all kinds.
I know, you're right.
This thought.
If it happened, yeah.
If it happens. Trying to think to the future, you know, when you're doing some dirt work, it's easy just to move some more, have room to grow, so.
Good idea, Kyle.
That's it.
Yeah, great.
I try to go fast, I'm sure Ty's got many stories to tell. But we did have, uh, Friday, did have a Hundred Canyons, uh, meeting in, uh, Council of Love's, and Paul now heads up the Hundred Canyons, uh, available funding. They've got about nine hundred thousand available for next year, and I think, talking, I wrote down with Ben that the weir thing over in Vail would be one that would be able to pay the first hundred and its money. But Paul had a speaker on there, um, that talked about the history of the Missouri River, so just a couple interesting points. Uh, Missouri River is twenty-four hundred miles long. Uh, it starts in Three Forks, Montana. Uh, there have been three hundred documented shipwrecks on the Missouri River. Uh, in nineteen twelve, the Rivers Act authorized a six-foot deep channel in the middle for, for navigation. In, uh, nineteen twenty-seven, they then, then said it had to be two hundred feet wide with six-foot deep. In nineteen forty-five, they changed that to nine-foot deep in a three hundred foot wide, uh, navigation, uh, channel, and that is from Sioux City to St. Louis, seven hundred and thirty-five miles where they have that navigation channel, and they think that in the future, that's gonna move from, uh, Kansas City, uh, south, because currently, uh, there is no trade ships from Nebraska City to Sioux City, then travel the river. A one, a one hundred year flood means that there's a one percent chance of it happening every year. So, I thought that was interesting.
Okay, um, question.
I wasn't expecting any questions.
I'm just repeating what I heard.
Paul will know this, but when they go and widen and deepen and straighten this river again, how much more money are they gonna kick back, cause it's gonna erode all our tributaries down deeper and water, nicely made it deeper as much they did back in nineteen forty-seven.
They showed, they had, they had maps of what the, uh, river looked like, you know, when Lewis Clark went up it, what they expect that it looked like versus what it looks like now.
It's changed, no.
Yes, it was a very much a meandering river, it was, and it's not that much anymore, what's that?
Just think about Carter Lake.
Carter Lake.
Part of meandering right there.
Blue, they made all them ox trails, they're gone now.
That's gotta really speed up the river flow.
It does, right.
Are you cutting that channel out?
Mm-hmm. And that's what they try to, I guess, with the, with all the dams, with the, what are, how many dams are there up north, three to five, uh, I don't know if we're good now.
Up in South Dakota.
Yeah.
Gavin's Point? Yeah. From Gavin's Point to St. Louis, it takes ten days for the water to get there.
But they like threw a duck in there once?
I, that's something I can imagine.
Right. Long hanging fruit.
Just some interesting things that I thought was that, uh, you know, Paul, uh, he, he makes the, uh, Hunger Canyons, which can be a pretty boring thing, at least he
Laven's it up?
Laven's it up a little bit with speakers like this. But, uh, and I had, uh, Wesco meeting yesterday. Uh, just so, I guess, you know, we all know that they moved, uh, the bake shop, the bake shop revenue for their first month open was sixty-six thousand dollars. Their previous record, when they were uptown, uh, for a month, was thirty-seven thousand dollars. So, uh, their revenue has spiked dramatically by getting down to Highway thirty. And they, we certainly expect it to continue to rise as more and more people are aware that it's open, and they, uh, our meetings are now held there, and we're gonna eat a sandwich there, and the food is really good.
Have you had the tenderloin yet?
I did, yes, yesterday, it's excellent.
I'm gonna go down and try it.
Okay, tenderloin is excellent, it's called the Duke.
The Duke.
Yes.
I seen it face, on Facebook, and I got a meeting with the pork tent, that's two weeks. I wanted to eat it before then, so I was gonna tell Kelsey about who does the tech contest.
Okay.
And I was gonna mention to her that maybe you have somebody come try one for send somebody else that's
I mean, their, their main cook was the main cook.
Me.
At Grumford.
Buy it.
Wiggis.
Yeah.
Doug?
Oh, Doug, yeah.
He's the, he's the main cook. That was, was, yeah, the Duke, get it, Ty, I highly recommend it. Uh, we've, I've talked to you before about the, uh, Smart Living that they started. They're actually gonna have a board task force to kind of guide that, and I, I am on that, but Wesco has branded theirs, called the Next Step Living. And, um, I, I, I mentioned it to Terry, but, uh, Clay, and I don't know if he'll bring either of his other management team with him, but he wanted to be on our four county meeting agenda, uh, December tenth in Woodbine. We're, they're seriously looking at expanding into, uh, Shelby County into Harlan, and I know they're already servicing people from Harrison and Monona County, and with this Smart Living, I think, looking, Wesco sees this in the future as, um, getting more homes maybe that aren't, and more people that they currently don't service, and so I think he'd like to express that to all the people that Wesco currently services in that area. So, I think it'd be nice, he, he would just said, I'd like to get on and meet all of the supervisors from each of those counties, so.
Yeah.
He's gonna be on there. And, uh, like I said, I know Ty's got a lot, so I got early childhood today at noon, but that's it.
You better not be like
We know he's the chair. Uh, I'll make it quick. Tabanami is coming next week, she's on our agenda, talk to Terry a little bit about it. Grant application for your state for OPAH funds, I don't think that's to be directed with our OPAH funds, but having us as part of it, but she'll walk us through that. I did have last week our ISAC meetings, Executive Board, uh, pretty impactful, a lot of, went over a lot of audits that we have for different arms of the ISAC, we did do Andrea's director review, which was good. Uh, everybody was pretty impressed and happy about the ninety-nine county tour, thought that that was great, get out. I did have, I do have an ECI State Board meeting coming up, but it's on Tuesday, so I'm probably missing that because of our meeting. Stuff's going on there. That's, I'm actually very enterous. Terry, you got disbanded. I'll talk to you guys a little bit about it, but we're looking into that, maybe some misguided information on state staff part of their recognition of disband. So, checking into that, and then I did have, it's kind of out of the blue, Steve Hartwig and Jake Sigvarnbo contacted me, interested in buying some county property, and I just said, well, I told them both, typically, we don't sell anything directly to individuals on anything. Those are sale bond or an auction, or a bid process, they're, um, Jake didn't know, he was induced, he didn't, he didn't even know what parcel it was, Steve did send me a picture of.
Where's it at, what are they gonna do with it? Fun it?
I don't know.
They would pheasants forever?
No, well, Jake would be, he didn't say.
But it wasn't necessarily that.
Wasn't necessarily that. I said, you know what, I'll bring it up to the board, but they would take full more action, decide if we wanted to sell anything, and if we would, how we do it, and
Is it, what's it used for now currently?
I think it's just timber.
It's just timber? They wanna hunt?
Okay, it's all fine.
Oh, that little skiff of ground that conservation currently maintains?
Yeah.
That little
Is that public in through conservation?
It's public, I think, yeah, but it's hard to maintain, and I think it's right behind Jake's house. Like, right behind their houses. Yeah.
And maybe he wants to build an house there, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, they probably just And
Thing I'd be concerned is, I seem like, is that their eatment that we've
I can't remember.
Cemetery or something on that property.
Research and get something on your, in your packet next week.
That's been brought to our attention to this board.
Yeah. Yep, I got a lot.
Yep, I got a lot of notes today.
A lot of years, I remember through it, there's something with that. Maybe with the maintenance of that.
No, I think I know where it is.
Since I've been on board.
Has it?
No.
Okay.
Well, they just reached out to inquire to know.
Yeah.
If we're interested or not. I'll bring it up.
Find out.
Find out more information.
Put it on property tax rules and we're not using it for anything constructive. I'm always in favor of selling something, but. What process would we have to go through to make it?
Get a fair price.
How would we get it to begin with?
Right, and Chris might be aware of some of the history of that.
Yeah, Chris, Chris, I think he was here when that was asked about. Yeah, if that was a doubt to us or what, you know.
Right, so I wonder if Jake's near Oakbrook. Jake's has got to be the same one because he said, hey Dave, I live out in Oakbrook and I was told the county owns a chunk out there. We might be interested in partying with it. So I bet Jake's still interested in the same.
I have to say property. Because Steve does some.
They'd have to do a whole bed or something.
Yeah.
Steve lives down the road. You know.
Does he live in that cul-de-sac too?
No.
Or no?
Steve would live down.
Down on the road.
The main road. Yeah, and O Avenue, right around by the bridge when you turn.
Oakbrook, oh, so he probably have butts to it on the back side.
I think you have to clerk put that.
I'll find out.
Yeah, I'll do some research and.
But some, I mean, if you don't have to do anything, we can.
We're looking into.
But we can look into it.
Right, yeah, we're looking into.
A little bit.
That's all I got. No, they're calling me.
I had West Central Community Action Meeting. Those always go pretty fast. There's always a lot of policy updates. Lot of changes being made to the Head Start policy, the things in Redder, the things are updating. Pass around the. What I think to be the, the numbers of people that they've actually serviced during the year. Ten thousand one hundred sixty six individuals, one thousand eight hundred thirty two households. Both through federal, state and local programs. So I think they're doing their job. As usual, it's hard to keep all of the positions. Both have, have a hard time keeping staff at Head Start. Well, they have, we're getting good qualified help to, you know, they find they start working and then at another job. But it's a very active. Organization. They do a lot of good things. The heating program, the food programs and the Head Start. All good things. So I will, you know, by time it's tied. I show up here every minute of the day. I got notes.
Ty, we want to get started.
Okay. Let's look in the boots, feel a little swamp mud on.
Had a shower free today. It was a fast and furious trip. I mean, when you get on the plane, I was already. I was studying before, but I mean, the packets that came at me, I'm studying stuff to go out there to try to make sure it was baked into my mind and. I had a good passionate talking points. You know, they, they liked stories. Richard talked about the flood mostly. Mills County is still trying to get money. I mean, it's a long time ago. They had their flood and there's maybe. I can't remember for sure, but it's been a long time ago. They're still trying to get money, right? Sorry. That was bad. Anyway. Back track. Then, so then that was Barry and Carl basically had similar talking points on the flood stuff and FEMA's. Which were potentially going to get rid of at the national level, at least. From a organizational standpoint, they might be a small group that handles the. Funding to wherever you need it. And I've actually been, been talking with our, with our EMA about what he thought were some good ways and gosh, he has a lot of, I mean, so. Just, just knowing how Zach is, I mean, if all of our EMA coordinators actually like the idea of the state managing it better. I mean, they're closer to it and you don't, and basically you've eliminated the large paper size thing. So anyway, that was their big talking point. I, I kind of focused on infrastructure and rural capacity building. But I'll, I'll kind of go in this here to me, try to stay on tracks. The big thing we were pushing out there was a new bill that is, it's got bipartisan support now and we were trying to get senators and more House members onto it. Grassley seemed extremely interested. In fact, he said, get, get his bill number and he said, you know, so he wanted my card. So I mean. Because I was bringing up all the, the emphasis this here, I talked mostly about. And then we did actually have, this was a knee twist. You know, like when we go up and talk to people, maybe it would hurt if some of our, our industry partners, you know. And I can't remember the names of all of them, you know, everybody's got their little acronym. But we took one of them with us and he was actually the ones up there doing a lot more pushing this bill. I think he really wanted to get in front of Grassley, so it paid off for him. And he said to me, he said, boy, your passion, passion speech for capacity building was great. But anyway. Rural Partnership and Prosperity Act, it's HR sixty zero or six zero four one. Figured you'd be writing that down right here. Anyway. It's to build capacity, help us to repair our, our deteriorating infrastructure. Stuff like being able to put out grants, you know, I mean, them to just be able to send money to us, the state would be all up in arms, but. It would be in a grant system that would be more, more applicable to us and we'd be able, you know, easier to get. Directly to us. Different ways and, and they actually had it all wrote out and I can send this around to you guys to read some of this stuff. This one in particular has got the stuff with that bill. I think it would be very beneficial. I mean, it would take money, you know, right, you know, we've got our population losses, so we need planners and stuff. Gosh darn, I don't want to get ahead of myself here, but. You know, there's, there's different things that we. Population loss, aging infrastructure, limited staffing, that was a big one for me because we don't, we've talked about it before, hiring maybe a grant writer. A lot of these big counties, that's what they have. They got planners, they got planning staffs. They got, they've got grant staffs, I mean. But I just looked at Grassley and I said, there's five supervisors on our board. You know how many staff members we got? I don't know for sure. I mean, I'm sure everyone's different. I said, you're looking at my staff member. And it's all five of us. We have five staff members, us, that's it. I said, our auditor's office helps us with, with things. That have, happened inside the courthouse and a little, but I said, then we're just taxing her. I said, so we, we, we basically need to find ways to improve staff. That will help build the county and create a better tax base. So we don't need to keep taxing those that are here more. We need to increase our tax base, more people. More industry, more commercial opportunities. Those are the things that we have to have. And as much as we'd like to all think that we're the sharpest guy in the room, we know our limitations. Just always hate to admit them out loud. And we need these kind of people in our counties to help build them and I, and then I throw it at him. I said, if the governor wants to keep that three point. Seven or eighty percent in contact. Three point seven, but I don't know. Get the point something, alright? If she wants to keep that or see that be a legacy point for her or even to lower it more. We got to build this. We got to find other ways, you know, I mean. You know. Different ways to do the tax and, you know, I mean, I was talking to Terry Wilber. And he was talking about how they tax their. Their nuclear plant and they're actually going to build another one or two. Oh, that potential for it anyway. But they taxed in, it's a, it's a pilot. Payment in, payment in lieu of taxation. So basically it's not, it's an, it's an alternative taxing system. I have no idea the depths of it. I mean, something to dig into with our big companies, you know. Maybe instead of charging a property tax, that way when their profits go up and down, ours do too, thank you, but. You know, they're able to afford more when they're earning more. That's kind of how that works. At least that's kind of the quick explanation. So there was different things that we discussed, you know, in our, in our meeting that, that on the morning of Wednesday.
Is that tax kind of like what Craig brought up with Severance?
Severance tax?
Yeah, yeah.
Similar to that?
That's similar, you know, like where we were talking about.
More and more.
Exactly. So it's pilot is what they call it, property, a payment in lieu of tax. Anyway, we talked about, we talked about our poverty. We kind of brought that up, you know. And then I actually brought up the, what, you know, we've, we've got an aging plan, you know, and so we're afraid if something like happened to Perry might happen to us. Now Perry's got rescued. You know, with the new plant that's coming in down there.
And we have Lexington in Nebraska last week.
That's, and how interesting did, what was the timing there? You know, I mean. That was three thousand jobs in a town the size, you know, a little bit bigger than Dems, maybe the same size as Dems.
Yeah, what'd somebody say, ten thousand?
Yeah, pretty close to ours. I mean, with our hidden population, that might be the same size. So they're going to have hidden population too.
Yeah.
But, but you know, you, if, if you look at that, I mean, that would. I don't know that Smith would, what does Smith do, two thousand to fifteen hundred. But anyway, it'd still be a, a very noticeable if we, they for some reason hadn't shut that plant. I think, I think the big reason Lexington got shut down was chain speed. I mean, they just didn't have cattle for the chain anymore.
See, I was saying that was an older plant. But somebody said it was built in the nineties, I don't believe.
No, no, it was probably a did a major renovation in the nineties.
Remember the mid States electric going out there a lot in the nineties. I think that's what gave me a hunch that they've got their start, because we're in Lexington for like years.
But it shows how consolidated we are and that one can close and look at the rip off that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and then, and that was some of the things that I brought up. I said, we're ag century. Crawford County and just like most of fourth district about Iowa, you know, we're ag century, which is great, which we do here. And I think that will already always be one of our primary focuses, but we got to diversify. Now without planners. Here's the problem. All five of us, other Gene and Craig who've got industry outside of farming as well. I mean, we're all ag, the three of us are ag century. So that's where our mind is all the time. You know, so we need, we need to be able to think outside the box. That's why you bring in planners, people that understand, looking at the big picture. See what we got and where we could go, you know. I will tell you that our CDC group, it's for rural development, there's a few of us on. We are actually starting to look at what we have available as far as all of our fiber, where our water is, where our sewer is, what, what we have in Crawford County. Where we could build on and offer industry something. What we, what do we have? Because we really don't know. I mean, so we're working on that. Those are some of the things that we were telling, talking to them about for talking points up there. Disadvantaged community, I mean, in a sense we are, you know, barriers to access, you know, the application process. We were, we were really hitting on all that kind of stuff. And then like I said, the capacity gap, you know, I mean. Des Moines, both counties, their, their capacity to grow is, is limitless. It's one of them. You know, and I'm not wanting to compare us, I, this. Just speak for me, but I don't think the four of you are probably much different nor the five of you. I don't want a Des Moines in the middle of Crawford County. I, I just, we're happy to be rural, but we want to be a successful rural like Susan Sue County is. And not, and to Carl's blush, I brought his county up. I said, they are the, they are that shining hill in rural America, Iowa. I mean, they're doing it right up there. So we, we've got an example of how to do it right, but we need some help. And I told, I looked right at Senator Grassley, he's watching me and I looked right at him and I said, sir. I said, unlike your major cities that you guys just keep pouring money into and building thirty eight trillion dollar desks. I said, we want to hand up. And then we're proud, we're proud rural people. Once we get going, you won't have to worry about stuff. I mean, we'll still, we'll still send for applications for grant opportunities for things we need them for, but we'll take care of ourselves once we get rocking. We just, we've got, we've got behind the curve and we just need a little hand up and that's what this, this bill was for. So that's what we focus most of our energies on. I'm going to pass this around. I had about an hour and a half that Terry Wilber and I had to goof off. Out of, out of three days being gone, I had about an hour and a half to take a breath. And so we went to the Library of Congress. And that's probably the prettiest building in Washington DC. It's a, you gotta go, you gotta walk through Thomas Jefferson's books. I mean, you can't get out of any of them. I'd like to grab a few of them out, but. But I mean, it was pretty impressive. I mean, and then we were overlooking one of the reading rooms. And I said, and I looked at Terry, I said, we got to get in there. He said, I wonder how we get in. I don't know. So he walks out, there's information. Passes around, this is my library card.
Oh, my gosh.
That's how we had to get in that reading room. We had to go get a library card, which really wasn't that hard.
Free?
So, yeah, it was free.
Wow.
Yeah, it was kind of like what we did when we got our card down here with EMA. Same, same, same process. Went in there and they checked your ID and all.
I used to have one too.
Did you really?
Yeah.
Pretty cool. But so that's my, that's my library card to the Library of Congress. So my hour and a half was well spent. I really kind of thought I'd like to go to the archives and supposedly they got on display a part of the constitution that typically isn't on display. And so then I really thought about that. We didn't go to the archives, but that in an hour and a half. We'd have planes if I'd have got into the archive, I'm sorry.
With that card, can you check things out on that? You throw out a card like, oh, you step one from the, all the way.
So I'm in the system.
Can you check a book out and bring it home?
No. I don't know. There's a lot of, there's some, I suppose there's something to check, but most of the stuff they were sitting around reading and then they were flooding back. But it's pretty interesting. I mean, there was clerks and stuff from different offices there checking out books.
Read the back, but you don't tell me.
But the. And, and that was pretty interesting. But that was about the only goof, goof off, if you want to call that goofing off, that was the only goof off type of hat. But really, I mean, you guys, I'll, I'll pass this stuff around. There's some, you know, this is actually shows all of our county economies. It's a profile of the county economy across the country. I mean, they got us, Naco did an outstanding job of preparing us. Owen and Rachel, I mean, they deserve tons of credit. They did a great job of preparing us for this. And when we went up there, we, we, we went up and. Was there eight different groups? But anyway, there was about four to five, six of us in each group and then we had our staffer, one staffer with us and then. One of our industry partners and we went in and, and we got mostly Iowa, but we also went and talked to Washington, went to North Carolina. Which was kind of good because we're, we're walking through the halls and. Well, what, what do we tell these people to draw correlation to who we are? Because it was five of us. We're all from Iowa. It was me and Barry and Carl Hook and. And Richard, you know, so that, that was all we had is just Iowa people. Why are these Iowa people coming to see us? Well, Washington I could tie to because my great uncle went up to Washington to put, set up a post office back in the olden, the olden, olden days. And that town, the town grew up around the name of Rossburg, Washington. So that staffer thought that was pretty darn cool. I said, see, I tied to Washington. Plus we told, talked about Amanda McKinney who's a supervisor from out there. She is razor sharp. I anticipate she'll be, once her kids are all gone, I bet she ends up in Congress. She's sharp. She's, and she's a rancher, so she understands ag and all. And that's the key, key thing. Rural Action Caucus is, is similar, but it's different than my Ag Steering Committee. And I, I have a rural development committee that I'm glad to share on. That one. Probably has a lot of things and that's under Ag Steering, but the Rural Action Caucus is about the, the big picture. It's about all of the things that we're doing, whether it's our infrastructure or peoples. So it's more of a caucus to emphasize on the big picture of rural America. And I mean, I talked about, and I, I think the guys were giving me crap because you can talk a lot. Hey. So I got a lot in here every Tuesday. I talked about EMS and rural hospitals. You know, I talked about the challenges that we're facing.
The thing Ty, sometimes that frustrates me is that from a national level, they think rural is Des Moines. Right. When they're in Washington DC.
They look at Iowa as rural.
Right, Iowa is rural, so anything that they give, they don't specifically knock it down to that next. Segment that says, you know, hey, we're a county of sixteen thousand people. We are rural.
You know, and I'll just use EMS as an instance, for instance, when I, when I was talking to Senator Grassley about that. His head kind of went up a little bit when I brought up about how further out west. You know, you might have an hour or more before an ambulance even gets to you when you call for emergency help. You know, so I, I, we were talking about those kind of complications, you know, and the stuff that America's facing and, and we have to look after our rural schools. And I said, we don't have a lot of government, federal government around in Iowa, but Kasut County would contradict that because they got pretty much all of Bancroft County. But, or what used to be Bancroft County anyway. But the. When you get out further out west, the rural scout schools, that's what that money from the federal government goes down there to keep their schools afloat because their prop, they don't. Their, their, a lot of their counties have very minimal property tax that's under this property that's untaxable under the state. And the federal government won't pay a tax. So if they don't send that money, them, them, them schools suffer greatly. And you look how hard it is to, you know, to educate your kids on the, the dollars that we get now with the rising cost of everything. Well, imagine if you had Crawford County when you only got a tax of a third of it. We'd have terrible, we'd have terrible. You know, facilities buried in, you know, we wouldn't, wouldn't be able to take care. And then you still got to take care of all the roads going through the federal grounds and all that stuff. And then you still gotta take care of all the roads going through the federal grounds and all that stuff. I need facial, you know, I guess everything to dirt road. That's what I heard again. But anyway, uh, you guys are sure welcome to look through all this. This one here kind of talks about that. These were our rural talking lines. This was stuff we. What's that?
They might have all paper out the way they're going.
Yes.
Good thing you didn't borrow a book.
Oh, is that right? I didn't, I didn't read through all of that. I wasn't planning on checking out a book either. I just wanted to go in that room. It was, that is a very beautiful building. You gotta go see it. Library of course.
I do.
If you get a chance.
Check the fronts of those states.
Anyway, I'll just pass this folder around. You guys are welcome to look for anything you'd like to do there. But they did a great job getting us prepared and everything went real well. This was the first one of these fly-ins that we, we tried. And you know, like sometimes they'll fly in supervisor to testify before the House or the Senate committees, but. I talked too much, so they eventually asked if I'd ever be interested in doing that. Maybe, depends on how well you prepare me for that. They did a good job. That's, and when I'm confident, when I got to say I, I can rattle on. Well, Carl and, and, uh, Richard, well Barry kind of already did, but the rest of them got a good dress on. Both ties got a lot to say. They were teasing the nurse to trip, which.
Aw, Ty.
You got broad shoulders.
Yeah.
Hope he's never teased you about that.
I, I'll survive it. You know what? If it, if it helps us out here, that's, that's the objective. Pretty much, uh, I mean, I didn't have time to do anything else last week.
You can keep going. I'd find it all very interesting.
Before you get started real quick, uh, on this employee, is that just because of the longevity or, or this?
Uh, it really should read as, I mean, uh, status change.
Status change. Just wanted to make sure.
I guess.
Pass right by the time. That stuff goes both directions.
Yes, just when you've been gone a week.
It was real quiet last week time.
Sorry.
Did the meeting get done? Record time?
Almost record breaking.
Meeting when Kyle was gone?
You almost beat cut.
Well, I mean, they had, um.
We can do that.
You mean last week?
Yeah. Yeah.
Much more dining.
Yeah, sign.
There were just the three of us to do the work of five people.
Well, let's start, uh, Jason Meredith, uh, he did, uh, I get hit, even for a landfill, uh, the. Uh, the rural water installation out there. The work is done, uh, I, I, I. Just making sure that they all right, they, they want to get that water line in while they had decent weather to be able to do so. So, uh, the work is done out there. This is the Eastman for, for the landfill property. I read through the description and it reads out, uh, that's good as far as that's concerned. But I, I guess I don't know if, if this is, uh, uh, copy of this stays up here. Copy of this goes to landfill, uh, or, uh, one of them will go back to, uh, rural water. Uh, it's really not a rural, a Eastman, so I. Don't know where these are to end up.
I'm guessing that gets held in the auditoriums.
So I have two copies of it and one, one will get, go back to him, uh, for, for water and one will be that, uh, again, uh. I, I can't read through it. I don't see anything. Thought that was kind of, uh, in conjunction with, uh, what we had done last week with the, the rest of the Eastman there, uh, for.
Right.
Dave probably needs to sign it though.
Right, yeah. Cause in the past, we don't vote on every single.
Right, yeah.
We don't.
We don't. No, so that they signed. Two copies. Uh, our bridge project over there, they did come back and touch up their center lines, uh, and, uh, give the object markets, but the center line looks very good.
Over there yesterday.
We've had that before. So I think I look good. That really should be complete project that, uh, we, uh. We shaped up that side road coming into the, to, for third street, uh, or, and, uh, that looks great. The bridge crew did a great job with that, uh, it rolled hard, uh, and, and they got it packed in good. They got the limestone down on it and, uh, and. Choice without sign and jump. So it really, that, uh, I, that was one I really wanted that. I'll throw it shaved up before winter hit here, uh. Just people were gonna travel it and it's gonna be a muddy mess if we want to gotten or done. So, uh, and, uh, so. We, we did get, get it completed up.
So was there a line of people from Vale waiting to drive over the bridge?
Uh, they were driving across it before it was even open. As soon as they saw a path, they're, they're gone.
People were waiting, I can tell you.
They waited a long time for, for the bridge, uh, and it, it, it did seem like it's a, it's a, it's a really good bridge, but, uh, uh, you know, we were hoping for sooner, but. Got a good bridge out and, uh, they'll be there for a hundred years.
Good things are worth waiting for.
Yeah, new boards probably the next thing they gotta rebuild. We probably.
I would, I would say, I, I must have really went south and I'm out of where I live right here.
Oh, they see you're, they're doing all that aging stuff through AI. So.
Vale's got some good work done to it, you know.
Got much left we can do over there.
Got them all pretty.
So you think.
I gotta shape up their, that weird project, uh, but church area there, uh, next year. A lot of good projects done at that time. So, good, good one. Uh, still on here, I just, the HMA white, you guys still up, uh, now. Set for a January twenty first letting. I've nothing, no, really new progress there until we get to a letting there. So, um. Our great crew, they are still working on, uh, the site of the charter rope property, uh. They moved a lot of dirt and, uh, I look at that site over there, taking it off there. And, uh, I tell you what, it looks. You know, for a lot of dirt that they took off there, it looks better than it did before. So, I, I, I think everybody on all fronts should be happy about the work that's getting done there. And, uh, that, uh, a lot of that down onto where we're got building, uh, hopefully in the next couple of years, uh, hopefully shaping up, but, uh. The race man, it's time to get what they can done for, for work in that regard done.
Kyle brought up a good point on that this morning about maybe adding a stall.
Well, we got it built up to where if we, we do want to size up the building, uh, you know. Plan for, for an extra bay or whatnot. We do have, we do have a level up to where we could.
I get it.
Call it more so.
Yeah, point on that. Just, uh, we talked about it a little bit earlier. I've been sitting thinking. Do we ever like, like if he was working up there in the northwest corner, if we moved the rickets motor grader down there? How hard would that be? You know, like if he's working up there? Just leave the motor grader up there overnight on somebody's property. You know, just to save some, you know, and, and just have somebody pick him up from the, you know. If Tony ran up there to grab him or something and then take him back up. Something like that. I mean, I see, I see motor graders as I'm driving across the country, like especially down in Kansas, you'll see motor graders that are prepositioned out in the country.
Because the township probably owns them out there.
Okay.
Yeah, there is different.
That's good.
What was it doing? Uh, and there are some, some that are.
As long as they don't.
They don't have the facilities for, uh, some of them do. So no, I'd like to have them shed, you know, it's impossible of course, uh.
I was just thinking about wear and tear, you know, I mean, appreciation, fuel costs. But he still have to get back to get fuel for the next day, so. Okay, but I was just thinking that one for silently, no, I think.
Could you take fuel to them?
You probably could.
Fuel, uh, tanks in the back of the trucks, we drove a few in trailer. It is powerful, yeah.
Just a thought.
I mean, uh, you know, you said. I've taken two guys to do the job, one guy, one person.
Yeah.
Right. Have somebody shuttle somebody around. Yeah, good point. You know, I, I see your, your thought too, it's just.
It, it's something that I have to, uh, give it some thought to. I mean, that is something that where we're.
I mean, if the distance, the distance to travel was what our concern was, that would be one way to alleviate that. Then you can consolidate them two sites over one. That's.
Yep.
Let's try to figure out ways to do that, not be worried. Drive a time or anything. Motor grader told pretty clear.
Yeah, so it, it had to be given some consideration to whether or not that's something that's, uh, truly wanted to absorb, uh, one shop and combine it. You know, I just, I'm a charter rope there. Uh, I know there are some backlash in, in other areas of, you know, where, where the. Talking about buying some shops. You know, I, I, there could be strong sentiments both ways on that one, but, uh.
We have closed D O Y the whole past.
So, I mean, I mean, I'm. I wouldn't be opposed to, uh, it's a good location. A little bit of a jant up there. Like I said, uh, if we don't have somewhere where Mark Margaret, my territory, uh. Like outdoors, you know, and, uh, especially at the winter time.
Just when they're working way up in the northwest, most of his territory is reachable from where the new site will be.
Yep, and there's always Mox Corner up there, uh, park, uh, and they're up in that neighborhood. So it's not a question, uh, but yeah, uh. In general, uh, like to have all the machine, of course, hundred, hundred roof, uh. But, uh, hopefully they have some more.
I get it, right, right. Just throwing it out there.
Definitely something to consider, you know, when we, when we're, you know, designing our, our shop, if we're trying to accommodate that kind of, uh. You know, additional phase for, for.
Kind of also keep this in mind. Now, it wouldn't be a very big connects, but we're contemplating, uh, emergency supply connects. Prepositioned at our county's properties.
Put them, got truck boxes.
Yeah, that.
Yeah.
I don't know if it'd be a twenty eight footer, it, it probably wouldn't be as forty foot, you know, just something that, you know, we have the emergency. The stuff that we'd have prepositioned up for rural areas, you know, the communities. Yeah. Them little beds that we were trying to figure out for homes for all of them type of thing, you know. So anyway, when there's grant opportunities, if we could have stuff prepositioned across the county, having them connectses which are. For the most part, road proof, you know, and they don't deteriorate. I suppose they could rust out the time, but once again, that'll probably, the Vale Bridge will probably need work, work.
We kind of look at that where we would place them throughout, uh, kind of probably, I don't think that'd be an issue whatsoever. I, I think we have. Yeah, and I'm sure we could accommodate, uh, Dallas City might be a little bit of a tight area than that, that location, but, uh. I mean, we, we don't, yeah, let's see what size we're talking, certainly that, I'm sure we can figure out something, even if they're not getting a large connects or whatnot, we can, you know. Pick up somewhere with them.
Because he can probably get them through the forestry service, military surplus stuff, you know, I mean, so you can get them at no cost or something. We've been talking about that. I just thought I'd throw that in. Could be a forty footer.
Well, that was something I, I said, I didn't see something on that.
We could also. At, at your site, it would have more security, you know, than if it was out of the tower side or something.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The other things we put at this house site, more interesting they might become to.
Yep.
Anyway, all right.
Yeah, it'd be closer to where, you know, they'd be needed, uh, distributed out of those. Yeah, uh, we could, we could take a look at that. Uh, I, I do think we have a room at our facilities, uh, in our yards, uh, you know, where we have our mini shops. Yeah, okay, thanks. But I forgot, our, uh, roadside crew, they are shut down for the season, uh, of course, uh, uh. Winter preparations, we're, we're getting everything geared up for possible snow this weekend, uh.
What do we got to get?
I mean, that's who you talk to. Who's gonna keep track of bunny tracks or fog days?
There's one of them woolly caterpillars.
I had one in my garage too, was floating around her for about three days. I finally caught him. I must, I've never seen that.
Come inside, I'm scared to be there, trying to find cover.
We're probably gonna get something. Uh, I had just made anywhere from one to three or three to, you know, or possibly more, uh. And I see there's forecast anywhere three to five, five, I see one zero to ten, I don't know, they're probably hitting it on a mark somewhere.
I seen where they were talking in feet at one time. That scared me a little bit.
I guess we'll see what comes. We're gonna gear it up, uh, you know, for sure. I'm sure our trucks will, will have to go out at some point over the. All the weekend here, uh, with that, it, the wind blows and, uh, it drifts any of the, of the gravels, uh, out there to where we need to get. Our, the water bears out, uh, get to see, it'll just have to be touch and go, uh, as far as the weather. But we're getting the, our wind blows on and, uh, getting all suited up for it. So we're getting some mix, the bin, mix bin. Filled up. Hopefully make a dent in it this weekend, so. Well, give us, give us a good test. Uh, that is what the guys are doing today, getting, getting their winter preparations ready and, uh. And still working some projects, but. We are. Interview for the Dallas City water bear position, uh, last night, uh, we got, we had my three applicants in for, for interviews and all very good applicants, uh. I think it's settled in on one, uh, we've, you know, this is with Damon here yet, he'll be back on his, and, uh. Sorry, go, take a long one. Um, there's one that, that it did stand out, yes, it was a very good experience that I, we're, we'll probably, uh, look at that direction of one candidate that stood out above the others. And, uh, I'm gonna make an offer to that gentleman today.
Yeah.
And, uh, my other two, that's a very good app, it's all three of them, uh, that, that's gotta be, but. I'll have one position, it's always hard to tell the other two, uh, go different directions, but, um. But I think we'll get that position to go, uh.
Offered, I would just have an extra long, long chain on that blade if it starts centered in. Those are. Easier to retrieve though.
Out of that, we, we are, uh, looking at our kind of for, for the west side, so water bear position, are these, uh, position, uh? Got some in-house interest in that one, uh, so, um, and then we'll be looking at, uh. For that position. So we're gonna have a little bit of shuffle around here.
Practice doing the hiring thing, you know.
Yes, but, uh, uh, wanting to get, get this, uh, all settled in, everybody settled in their seats, so, you know, before we get too far on winter here. So hopefully, uh, hopefully we can get our switcher, switcheroo and dug here real soon. But, um, I said, you know, west side, it will not be a hard one to fill, but I got a lot of interest in that one, uh, and, uh. And then we'll, uh, like I said, the chef, I end up having another position open to, uh, whether whoever takes that position, we'll have to fill that position, so.
Then you have those other two that were pretty good for the Dallas City one then.
Possibly, depending on, uh, we always try to hire within the area, you know, that they're operating now, uh. It, it's very important that they're, they're, they're blades, uh, uh, when you have bad weather, they're, they, they just really need to be out of the shop. I know we've had it in the past, you know, feel, I started out, you know, living in there and that moved now, continue to work it, it's worked out, but, uh. We do try to take that into strong consideration when, when hiring that here, you know, within reasonable distance from your shop, so. Good. Aside from that, uh, like I said, we'll see what the weather hands us this weekend. Hopefully, hey guys, spend the whole weekend off.
Wouldn't understand.
Hopefully. I can handle that, that melts off the next day and move on. We have a good Thanksgiving. Yeah, I have a, a leave scheduled, uh, hopefully the holiday, uh, days off there, uh, Thanksgiving and then, uh, I do. Uh, I see a, a, a conference, uh, the weekend for that, so. Uh I see a A G O conference a week after that, so. Good. God, that's next week.
Give Wade White a hard time for me. Hard, give Wade White a hard time.
I will.
He usually likes to give others a hard time.
Yes, he does.
He's a lead, I kept, they're all like that.
That's what I got.
Thanks, man.
I say, are they giving you a hard time? That means they like you.
Like second grade.
Good morning, you's okay, plus three sit here.
You can come right up too.
You can have this seat right here.
Please come up front.
All chairs you want.
Chairs that you can pull up closer.
We were trying to be quiet and moving the other ones, we're like, oh, don't worry about it. Well, I'm Tracy Feathers, I'm the Director of Development at Family Crisis Centers, and I have a couple of the advocates who work in this county with us, or the one who has been able to make it. Um so if you got that, she'll talk in a second, introduce yourself, and then I'm so. So we're happy to be here, I have to say, this is such a gorgeous courthouse. So I'm new to this job and new to baking the rounds, and wow, I love it, I love the wood, I love the doors, I'm like, wow. So it's been here a long time, I'm guessing.
Yes.
I'm thinking, that's the picture over there.
Yep.
I'm like, oh, there's a looks like a little bit of a.
Oh, that's the county far.
Oh, it's a county far.
Oh, there's a picture of it.
Went back there. Used to have a dome.
Oh, wow.
That's true.
If you ever go through Seward, Nebraska, the twin to this is over there.
Oh, really?
I think it's.
About thirty miles.
They have their dome on.
Okay, it still has her dome, and there's another one out there. It's a small back similar station too. Same, same outfit built, it's off Nebraska too.
Oh.
Up margin holder area.
Alrighty, well, thanks for having us, um and thank you for your past support uh for Family Crisis Centers, um we appreciate that, so we're excited to be here to share what we do and also. What your dollars do to help make a difference, so um we support individuals and families facing violence, abuse, and trauma. So we meet them when they're afraid, they're uncertain, we give them resources, tools, and support to help them rebuild. So I like to say we're a small but mighty team, we have fifty two employees, forty one are advocates, so advocates are the people who do the real work helping clients. Um especially, you know, obviously the ones in your community, um we serve thirty one counties in western Iowa from Minnesota um to Missouri. So really, a lot of our advocates, we don't necessarily have a lot of offices, because they're in their own homes and can respond within an hour, um if need be, so they're out and about, you won't always see them. Um last year, they answered over forty six thousand crisis calls, now that's for the whole state of Iowa, so we answer crisis line calls for that. And we helped over two thousand individuals um in person with services. So really, we respond to life disrupting events that threaten safety and will be. And I think it's important, I always say, we do things that maybe some of us take for granted, that um we help provide. Food, clothing, transportation, getting a job. But also our advocates do things that things that we don't wanna face, fleeing violence with nothing but our clothes. We also maybe haven't had to go to court, I haven't, thank goodness, okay, that's not true, I got it, I got a ticket when I was about fifteen on a motorcycle. That I wasn't supposed to be doing, but anyway, I I'm good now, that was like a long time ago. Um and we help them find protection orders, we help them um with housing, we help them. With everything they need to really rebuild, because a lot of times, majority of people we serve are women. A lot of times, they don't have financial resources, they become very isolated. Um and if they they lots of times don't have credit, and if they do, it's bad credit, so they really have to start rebuilding very quickly. Um so a little bit about our budget, um it's about three point seven five million. Sixty five percent of that is state and federal funding, so that's obviously restitution money, um thirty one percent is charitable giving. And the other five percent, we get revenue from our thrift store. And that actually um provides enough money to pay for three salaries of our advocates, so we're trying to do as much as we can, obviously, we don't charge for services.
Where's that store at?
It's in Sioux Center, so.
Do you have just one?
We just have one. We could talk if you guys wanna build one, that's a whole nother story. Yeah, that's where our home base was, that's where we started. Are you friends?
No, but we.
We all know cars.
We know their supervisors.
Oh, right.
Good people, the Dutchman.
Yes, they're they're in a couple weeks, so I haven't had a go, so, alright, I'll tell them you guys said hi.
Please do.
I'll say that they called you Dutchman, they said.
The German said hello.
I like, I think I'm gonna start with that, I think it'll go well, maybe one of you shouldn't make a call. So really, um we're very efficient and cost a thousand thirty dollars to serve a client. Um so we are asking for fifteen thousand dollars, which that's what we've asked for in the past. Um and when you support us, you invest in stronger families, stronger communities, and a future for your violence. So I'd like these ladies, because they actually do the real work, I get the easy job, um just maybe you could talk a little bit um authority that shows the impact, and then assign us to talk a lot to you, so.
Yeah, sure, thank you, Tracy, so I'm Bianca, I'm the service manager that oversees the domestic violence program with Family Crisis Centers, and today I'd like to just um share with you one. Um impactful success story here in Crawford County of a single mother with five children that we were able to help about six months ago. Um she called into our our crisis crisis line, actually out of the Sioux City um safe place. Domestic Violence Shelter, that's how we got in touch with her, uh she had fled overnight, uh the sheriff's department was able to provide her transportation in the middle of the night with her five children. To the shelter in Sioux City. Were there, she connected with us, uh Family Crisis Centers, because she was abruptly, you know, taken from her support. Her family support, her community support, and she really wanted to get back into this area, because with no help, uh you know, just. Uh leaving a relationship that was full of violence, uh she really wanted her children to be back in a stable community where they knew their teachers, they had relationship, you know, they had friends, they had. Stable trustee teachers, um so we were actually able to go get her the next day and bring her back into the Dennis area. And provide her with uh hotel stays for about a week. So that we can help her get a little bit more stable, um and we also have a housing program here at Rogers Crawford County through FCC. Uh that was able to get her into one of our programs that helped her out for another twelve months. And that was with first month's rent and deposit. Uh so we were able to help her uh do a housing search, able to connect her to her local food pantry. Um and then we were also able to connect her with just a student counselor that was able to help her. Get some volunteer hours that could kind of help her get, you know, her mind off things. Get a little bit more invested with her community, and then also be there for her children as they were attending the same school that she was able to volunteer at. And through all of those um steps, you know, we were able to help her children also connect with uh outside counseling services. And that was free thankfully through the Crime Victims Compensation uh program that the State of Iowa offers to survivors. And uh right now, she's six months violence free. We are also able to help her obtain a civil no contact order, so civil just means that there was no uh criminal charges pressed, her law enforcement wasn't involved. We helped her file that protection order, uh and it was granted by the judge thankfully. Um and yeah, she's she's doing well, she still connects and touches base with one of our advocates here in town. If she's needing um anything, whether that be food, whether it's her clothing. Um anything that may look like for her, her children, and we will still continue to support her uh as long as she needs it.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
So you are actually in the office in Denton, just right down the street, where you office?
So I I don't, so I I oversee the program over in Clay County.
Oh, okay.
I do oversee this county.
Okay.
Uh Sonia Sonia here works out of that office, uh like two, two, three times a week, yeah, and our office actually that was one of the buildings where the vehicle.
I saw that, you have a big, nice, beautiful, yeah, nobody was in there, I'm assuming when they.
No, thankfully that happened on Sunday evening, but yeah, they're kind of, I just slept through our office.
So with the uh individual that you were speaking of, do you help then to help them find a job and maybe be able to be more self-sufficient and things like that? Uh children daycare and things.
Yeah, so we we I like we like to call our H T C also like. The big, the big sister and the big brother of the resources, so we also work really well with the community resources and partner up. Uh to get them connected and, you know, one less phone call for individuals and survivors to make and we to provide that transportation. Uh to drive them to where they're needing to get to.
For volunteer services and.
Correct, yes.
It kind of is one of those services that you have to know somebody that knows somebody to fit into how to help this particular, I wouldn't think that any particular situation is the same.
Correct, yeah, and that's what's very unique about each advocate is that if you go within a. Uh a county up north, it's not gonna look the same as the county here, just because you spend a lot of time doing our operation, the service areas that we cover as advocates. So I wouldn't be able to do my job sufficiently actually in this county, because I only know. Most of my, you know, connections, I'd call it Davidson County.
But they're similar Crawford County, how to go about finding what services.
Correct, yeah, but as you do the work more, you kind of like get shifted, it's another community, it's another person in the networking of this.
Turning over to stones and.
Yeah.
So I I think it's awesome that you could take these families and bring them back to where their their kids to have them upgraded. Behind one of them, thank you for what you do.
What we found for when we just, if they stay in shelter, which is in Sioux City, what happens is there's so much trauma, you know, there's usually several moms, several kids. They're traumatized, they're worried about their abusers coming, they're worried about other women's abusers coming, and there's so much chaos, but if we can get them back into their community, they have support, they have resources. It helps the kids have a little bit more normalcy, and I'm glad you asked the question about support, so really, we don't. Have people who we support for years and years and years, I mean, this woman, back on her feet, touch base, check in, things like that. But really, it's about helping them, so we might pay for rent and utilities for a while, but after a couple months, she's paying for more, paying for months.
But where would she be if she had no place to turn?
I.
Yeah, but is, are they safe now with the abuser uh no contact orders and?
With the protection? Yeah, so thankfully with the civil no contract order being granted with the judge, she's saved for the one year, um you know, that's. That's given that he doesn't try to, you know, bribe, violate it, or go searching for them.
But that's the trauma for those kids now, their their father's no longer around, and so they've really been upgraded in a bigger way than uh. Long lasting for those kids.
Yeah, and then we also sometimes provide them with like security cameras that they can hit up other.
Oh, nice.
So that's like a really good thing that we have, I mean, we're limited on those, but as long as we have something available, we'll give it to the. To the victim that help them set it up.
Feel safer.
Yes, and without no contact order, I mean, it 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 could be just one year, but we could help them. Get it granted for like extended for maybe five years, like before the year's up, so we we kind of go a lot of hats on, and. I just marched it, but I'm sorry, I'm sending another, I think, friend advocate, I'm bilingual, so I'm. My home office is in Salt Lake, and what I'm a state county, but I cover a total of six counties with property one, so I'm. Constantly like in and out here.
Okay.
The domestic violence advocate, her name's Jill, she's here five days a week, so.
So she actually lives in Crawford County?
She lives in. Yeah.
And she would be the one that's actually going to the office?
Every single day, yeah. Well, I think we're gonna work on getting a new space, I don't think it's gonna be anytime soon.
Yeah.
The damages were pretty.
Pretty strong.
Yes, um so uh once we do get another office, we are planning to um. Just have us be working together, and that way, whatever clients need, we're just there. And since like I'm mobile, I'm an hour away, I always like tell them like, hey, it might be an hour, I'm like, but we have someone else that can help you there, and if they're like.